Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council's legislative agenda. Welcome back. We had been off on a two-week hiatus for the summer. I think we came back refreshed, but I can't guarantee that. So with that, I'm going to start with our land We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fisher, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon. Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We are having two... One appointment tonight for the Housing and Human Services Board. Any public comment? We have Dennis Flynn. Go ahead, Mr. Flynn.
Thanks. I let Jacoby know I wouldn't speak.
All right. Thank you. Any council commentary?
Do we want to say their name?
Yes, for Mara Lammers. Seeing no council commentary, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? Did you say no?
No.
One no. That's six to one. Thank you very much. She is approved. Next on to the consent agenda. Anyone speaking on the consent agenda? It's Ann Marie Leimhauber in person. Ann Marie, are you here?
I'm sorry. I let her close myself.
Okay. Mr. Flynn, any public comment on the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, in person. Welcome.
Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Twenty-one days after the last council meeting, and there are 29 items on the consent agenda for any citizen who wants to testify and gets a total of two minutes to do it. This automatically mutes citizen participation, and I find it unethical. In OPR 2024-0292, we're giving a contractor over a quarter million dollars to help us write our climate impact and resiliency planning document. Why not use one of our own highly-paid employees? By the way, today is August 18th, and we got up to 83, maybe 85 degrees today. The highest was 101 degrees in 1967, and the lowest high was 60 degrees one year later in 1968. My main point tonight is the financial incentive you're providing to encourage an unsafe housing development, specifically the 12-year exemption for the Lacy project. In this historically marginalized, single-family housing neighborhood, you see exactly what is meant by the big fish eating the little fish for lunch. In a single lot that used to contain a single house, this project will build two four-unit townhouses and a triplex, 11 units, all served by a single shared driveway and no back alley and no pedestrian connection to the sidewalk. Anyone frail, disabled, or slow might be trapped if a fire starts on the east end of the lot, blocking the driveway, and consumes everything to the west. The only escape would be to hop fences into other people's property. Parking? Nope. Fire code prevents parking on a shared driveway. I guess anyone visiting can park on the street. Oh, I know. They'll just take a public transit or ride a bike. And you know how many... And you know how many public comments or testimony were made on this project? Either for or against? None. Zero nada. This is a disenfranchised community being taken advantage of, as made obvious by this and other multifamily projects replacing single-family homes within a block or two of this one. Who approved this unsafe design? Your DSC, Planning and City Engineer. I mean, with these kind of results, who could argue against giving them even more carte blanche power to run roughshod over those least able to stand up for themselves? Right?
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Are there any consent items council would like to take separately? Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I had asked earlier for number 18 to be taken separately.
Number 18?
Mm-hmm.
We'll be taking number 18 separately right now. Any commentary on that?
On 18 or the...
We're just speaking. I'm pulling out 18 right now to vote separately.
Okay, yeah, no commentary on that. I have commentary on some of the rest of it, though.
All those in favor of consent item number 18, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
No.
That's five to two. The ayes have it. The consent agenda, any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
I think Mr. Flynn's point on 29 items in 21 days is well-taken, and I think that that's something that we should potentially address in our rules moving forward. Again, we take a few weeks off. The community takes a few weeks off. Not a lot of time to look and see what's coming forward. You know, it's a point well-taken. I appreciate that. We'll definitely discuss that when we look at our rules update. When it comes to the MFTE thing, this is where you and I are going to disagree. I do represent that area, and I think that removing a lot of barriers to building housing actually helps to reduce the cost and makes it to where folks in my district can't afford to live in those spaces. And so I think it's going to be a good addition to the neighborhood, and I hope that we continue to do more things along this line to make housing more affordable.
Thank you. Any other commentary on the consent agenda? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? The consent agenda is past 7-0. Ms. Fisher.
Special Budget Ordinance C.36739 is deferred to August 25, 2025 Agenda. Resolution 2025-56 setting hearing before City Council for September 22, 2025, for the vacation of the east 250 feet of the alley between Maxwell Avenue and Cinto Avenue and between Elm Street and Oak Street as requested by adjacent property owners.
No commentary from citizens? Council commentary? Ms. Fisher.
Were you going to vote on it?
Oh, prepare to vote. Yes, I'm sorry. Prepare to vote. See what two weeks off can do for you. That's 7-0. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-57 setting hearing before City Council for September 22, 2025, for the vacation of Cedar Street between Montgomery Avenue and Carlisle Avenue, except the extended alley crossing Cedar Street as requested by adjacent property owners.
No public comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That's 7-0.
Resolution 2025-59 is deferred to September 15, 2025 Agenda. Resolution 2025-61 approving the appointment of Kevin Schmidt as the Director of Accounting for the City of Spokane.
There is no public comment. Council commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, Kevin Schmidt's been working for us for some time now. He's done a pretty good job working with our police and first responders, and I think that him stepping into this next role is going to do good for the city. So congratulations, Mr. Schmidt, on what I believe is going to be a 7-0 vote on you becoming our Director of Accounting.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. Although Councilmember Bingle is not a mind reader. Ms. Fisher.
Resolution 2025-62 is deferred to August 25, 2025 Agenda. Resolution 2025-64 setting forth the City Council's approval and endorsement of funding for contracts for CHHS arising from the Home Investment Partnership Program allocation, the home ARP tenant-based rental assistance allocation, the 1,590 sales and uses tax revenue allocation, and the 1,406 sales and uses tax revenue allocation. This resolution authorizes the execution of the applicable and appropriate contracts once formalized without further City Council action.
We have John.
Thank you. We have John Alder. No. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I'm going to speak on this one. You know, I've been pushing for homeownership opportunities my entire time on council. I think this is the first time that we're using $1,590 to help leverage that into it, and as a result, we're going to get 12 opportunities for people to step into some homeownership. Six of them will be market rate. Six of them will be affordable opportunities. And one of the things that we've been able to successfully leverage MFTE and other programs into doing is to building a lot of rental housing, which is important. We need that stock, but we also need many more homeownership opportunities. I know plenty of people in my district who are ready to step into homeownership if attainable options were available. I think this is a good use of the dollars to, instead of just focusing solely on rentals, finding ways that we can leverage that into homeownership opportunities. And I'm excited for those 12 families who are going to have that option, so.
Any other council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. That's 7-0.
Resolution 2025-65 declaring Sound Water Services Incorporated, Chahalas, Washington, a sole-source provider, and authorizing the city to entering to purchase order for bulk replacement chlorine gas components, $60,514.87 plus tax.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That's 7-0.
Resolution 2025-70, joint resolution of the Board of County Commissioners and the Spokane City Council to approve the employment of the Chief Executive Officer for Spokane International Airport, Feltzfield Airport, and Spokane International Airport Business Park.
There is no public comment. Council commentary? Councilmember Bingle, and then Councilmembers Oppone.
Councilmembers Oppone can go.
Go with Councilmembers Oppone.
Yeah, I'm actually going to abstain from this vote instead of it. I don't feel comfortable moving forward with voting for this because I just found out about the candidate about six hours ago. I think he'll probably be great from the couple of questions we heard and the process that went through, but I don't feel comfortable moving forward at this time on voting that. I think that I was a big advocate for public transparency and public process at STA on the CEO. This is an important role for our entire region, and I think that it should be... The public should know about the person more than six hours before we're voting on it. So I don't think that would be consistent with my previous positions.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I actually agree with Councilmember Oppone on this one, and I appreciate him taking this position because there was quite a push on our end for transparency when it came to the STA appointment, and I think that the airport is equally an important organization, and making sure that people understand who's being hired for this position is a big deal. And I don't think that there's any doubt that Dave is going to be great. You know, he went through a process with the board, everything like that. But again, with such an important appointment, I think that it would make sense to give it some time to breathe for a week, to where the people who are going to be having to deal with this person's policies, you know, generally approved by us, I think it makes a ton of sense for us to allow the public to come in, hear his name, because again, we heard his name for the first time, again, about six hours ago, and not even six hours ago. But if we're just hearing about it, I know that the people are just hearing about it, and you know, maybe there's something that was discussed in an executive session that can't be shared with us because it's outside of executive session, and maybe there's something that is pertinent for the public at large to understand about the candidate. Again, I have no reason to suspect that. I'm not saying there is anything. I'm just saying it would behoove us to wait a week and give the public some time to look into it. That way, when they come back, they feel as confident as we do in making this decision, and it doesn't look like we were just doing something so quick just to get it done. And again, definitely not suggesting any impropriety in any way, just saying that I think it would have done all of us some good to give it a week. And so I will also be abstaining from this vote.
Any other commentary? Councilmember Klitschke.
While I share the concerns about the timing, I just can't really say that I feel comfortable deferring either. So I'm going to go ahead and respect the process and put my faith in the Airport Board to make this appointment, but I think for future reference, maybe we could have thought about this timeline differently. And it's not necessarily the council's role to like second-guess or make it more difficult for the Airport Board to make a decision, but... And I know hiring processes can be delicate and quick, but I think that in the future, I think the concerns are valid, but I think we also have to respect the process that was put out, and we ended up having representation in, you know, a member on the board. And so I'm going to go ahead and respect that and vote for this, but I do acknowledge those concerns.
Thank you. As... I'll just speak as a representative on the Airport Board. I was part of the selection process. The most significant job a board has is selecting a CEO. That is the process. It was extensive. We hired a firm to assist us in that, went through a number of applicants, in-person interviews, Zoom interviews, onsite visits out, and really looked at the best person. I hear my council members wishing they had more input, but really, as you look at your various boards, that is the board's purview. I know we have an interlocal agreement. This will go before the county tomorrow because we are in it with the county, so the county will have to approve this person also. But like Councilmember Klitschke said, there is a process. Our last airport CEO was 14 years ago, and so really, this has just gone through the process. I feel very confident that this person... We only heard... His name was only disclosed today due to confidentiality reasons in the search and for his prior employer. I think many of us understand that process going forward. But at this point, I think it would be a disservice to this gentleman and to the process and really to the Airport Board who have done their work diligently to not move this forward. We'll have opportunity to meet Mr. Harding coming forward. I've asked all the council members, reach out soon as tonight. Zing them an email if you want to know more, but I believe at this point in time, we need to go ahead and move this nomination forward so this man can get to Spokane and get to work. We've been without a... We've had an interim CEO for the last five months, who did a great job, Frank Miller, but at this point in time, the airport is ready to move on with new leadership. So I will absolutely be voting in support of this new CEO. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, so... And I hear everything you're saying. In the end, we don't represent Mr. Harding, right? We represent the people of Spokane. I think the people of Spokane should have an opportunity to weigh in on this, and it's not... Again, all the questions that we have, I mean, we absolutely have the right to ask them, but again, giving extra space allows the people of Spokane to pass questions along to us that we can do because we represent 75,000 people each, and so being able to bring that voice to ask the questions. And again, I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong. I'm just saying it gives us the opportunity to do that. And we do big hires all the time, right? Like when we have a search for a city administrator, right? I mean, you know, that person is basically going to be helping the mayor oversee a $1.2 billion budget, right? When we hire a police chief, right? There are many rounds of us going through and interviewing and then allowing the public to see, the public to give feedback. There are a certain few positions in the city that are incredibly important, and I think that the public should have a right to weigh in on this. And I think there's a way to do it well, where you can both... I totally hear what you're saying on, you know, we don't want his other employer to know that he's seeking other employment. I totally get that, and there's a way to do that. But once he's been recommended, we are probably going to take that recommendation unless there is something that somebody finds in the background that we weren't privy to, and they say, hey, there's a major concern here, and if that major concern is such a big deal, then we save ourselves so many years of headache by somebody finding that for us. And so I think it's... Again, I think Dave's going to be great. I think he's going to be awesome. I do trust the Airport Board. I think they're doing a good job. I think many of our boards do a good job. But the things that I find important are not always the things that a certain board finds important. And I think it's important for every citizen to have the ability to weigh in on something like this, considering it's so crucial. And so I think that there was a way that we could have done that moving forward. I think we had an opportunity to do it, and again, in the end, I think the people of Spokane deserve the opportunity to weigh in on this.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? I will say your example of a city hire versus the airport hire, which is an interlocal agreement, so there is a little bit of a different process going forward. All right, prepare to vote.
Five ayes and two abstentions.
Five ayes, two abstentions. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Council President?
Yes.
I know we don't have our parliamentarian here right now, but I do think it'd be important as we talk about rules and whatnot in the future to think about where and when it's appropriate for an abstention versus a yes or a no. I know it's been a contentious thing in the past, but I think it's something we might want to figure out.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. We will add that to our discussion. All right, Ms. Fisher.
First reading ordinances, Ordinance C.36723 titled Public Dollars for Public Benefit relating to City Public Works, enacting a new Article 11, Chapter 7.06.800 of the Spokane municipal code and setting an effective date. Ordinance C.36729 amending Ordinance C.35052 that vacated portions of Dakota Street in the City of Spokane. Ordinance C.36730 amending Ordinance C.36730 that vacated portions of Boone Avenue, De Smith Avenue, and Dakota Street in the City of Spokane. Ordinance C.36731 amending Ordinance C.27061 that vacated portions of Boone Avenue, Astor Street, and Sharp Avenue in the City of Spokane. Ordinance C.36732 is deferred to September 15, 2025 Agenda. Ordinance C.36733 is deferred to September 15, 2025 Agenda. Ordinance C.36734 relating to fees and charges amending Chapter 8.02 of the Spokane municipal code, specifically amending Section 8.02.065, streets and airspace and other matters properly related thereto. Ordinance C.36737 code cleanup ordinance removing expired SMC Chapter 9.01 as a result of a sunset provision triggered upon the passage and implementation of I-1433 in 2016, repealing Chapter 9.01 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C.36740 titled Safe and Welcome in Spokane, expanding protections against warrantless searches from immigration enforcement in designated non-public areas amending sections 12.05.005, 12.05.060, and 12.05.070 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C.36743 is deferred to August 25, 2025 Agenda. Ordinance C.36744 related to the designation of and requirements for streets, alleys, and driveways amending Spokane municipal code Section 17A. .020, .030, .040, .120, .160, 17C.111, .340, and 17H.010, .010, .090, .130, and creating a new Section 17H.010, .015. Ordinance C.36745 related to roadway naming and addressing standards amending Spokane municipal code Section 17D. .0508, .040, .050, .100, and .160. Ordinance C.36748 and interim zoning ordinance related to the calculation of density and planned unit developments amending Spokane municipal code Section 17G. .070, .030, setting a public hearing and establishing a work program. And Ordinance C.36746 maximizing community partnership grant opportunities amending Section 7.19.010 of the Spokane municipal code for direction is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. First of all, I want to acknowledge our office administrator, Mr. Jacoby Bird. You see our improved technology with your name up there on the screen, so we're asking that you please be in the chambers when your name is coming up to minimize some of that time of looking for you out there in the lobby area. So with that, we'll go with Ann Marie, and then Barbara Woodbridge, and then Kathy Gunnison.
Thank you. Welcome. I'm glad to be here. Do I just start?
Yes, you can just go ahead and start.
My name is Ann Marie Lee Hauber. I'm a retired attorney. I practiced law for 32 years. I am here on... I sent all the council members extensive materials via email regarding this very significant, very serious issue of reclassifying, in particular, alleys and driveways so that they can be accessed by developments, small developments. I appreciate your comment, Councilmember Bingle, about housing being more affordable, but it's not just an issue of affordability. My first personal injury case many years ago involved a little girl who crossed the street without a sidewalk. She was killed in the presence of her parents, and Riverside School District ended up paying almost a half a million dollars. So this is a very serious issue that we cannot just condense alleys and driveways into code compliance streets, particularly... My material particularly emphasized that the reclassification will end up not mandating sidewalks or walkways. So by the new provision, and I'm reading from the agenda, that the streets, alleys, and other traveled ways, read driveways, will be for efficient and economical travel, including for pedestrians and bicycle travel. I am telling you, that opens up the entire city for liability. This is a foreseeable risk. I just ask... I said everything in my emails, and I'm passionate about this because I agree, we need housing, but low-income people also need safety. In fact, they need more safety because sometimes they're not as sophisticated as other people.
And thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Barbara, and then Kathy?
Hello. Tonight, I'm taking a different hat than I typically do when I come up here. I am speaking on behalf of being a committee member, Committee Chair for the Associated Builders and Contractors, and I am here in regards to the Public Dollars for Public Benefit, Ordinance C.36723. And I just wanted it to be known that I am opposed to this particular... And, um, I just wanted it to be known that I am opposed to this particular ordinance. One of the greatest things that we have in a, um, business, as a business owner, as a contractor, is to say that they have the ability to, um, decide what jobs, to have fair opportunity. And that's a lot of things in our community is fair opportunity. With this, there are some stipulations that do make it very hard for smaller, midsize, or larger contractors in this area to comply with. A lot of people don't want to have necessarily, um, the union structures that are out there. They want to be able to, um, have their structure for business. And that's a wonderful thing to have when you're a business owner, is to know what you believe, the structure that you have, the training, the responsibility, all of that, as a business owner, when you take on a job and put your name on it. With this particular one, unfortunately, what we see is that it reduces our choice. It reduces some opportunity. And it's a concern for some of the contractors, many of the contractors in this area, that call Spokane their home and look to do business and build for this great city. So I do oppose this today, and I thank you for this time. And I thank you, Councilmember Dylan and Landon, for replying to my email when I asked for your perspective on it, because I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, and then Cheryl?
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Kathy Gunderson, and I'm a proud member of Chief Gary Park Neighborhood Council and a member of Westminster United Church of Christ, which seeks to lift up all people. I was a minority apprentice bite fitter in 1975, Kaiser Aluminum Mead Smelter. And so I'm interested in the graduations to the Head Start to Construction Trades pre-apprenticeship about every seven weeks. The pre-apprenticeship program of the Associated General Contractors produces eight to 20 folks per class who are persons of color, veterans, female, tribal members, youth without direction, homeless, and formerly incarcerated, and fresh out of your apprenticeship training. The oldest graduate was 56 years old and was looking forward to his new career and never returning to prison again. There is no shortage, as these 17 classes have been going on since the fall of 2018, and 80% of the people were formerly incarcerated. It seems like the AGC should be in favor of this ordinance to put them on a solid labor career path in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl? And after Cheryl will be Dennis Flynn.
Good evening. Thank you for those kind words about our apprenticeship program. Uh, I've, okay, let's say I don't have 30 seconds. Correct. Okay. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Stewart. I am the executive director of the AGC. I'm here to discuss the Public Dollars for Public Benefit ordinance. Uh, the AGC represents nearly 400 firms throughout Eastern Washington. We are union and non-union, large and small, everything in between. And we've long maintained a commitment to free and open competition for publicly funded work. Uh, we do not believe the government should mandate or compel any firm to change its labor policies in order to, uh, perform those projects. Tonight, I want to address some of the claims that have come up to support this ordinance and our concerns with those. First of all, this is not a best practice. Mand, government mandated CWAs and PLAs across the country have faced serious legal challenges. Courts at both the state and federal level have shot them down as non-competitive, and even California has vetoed a PLA because of cost concerns. Second, this ordinance is not necessary to fight wage theft. Wage theft is already illegal. Prevailing wage laws already exist. And Spokane has some of the most stringent apprenticeship mandates in the state. Laws are in place to protect against bad actors, and suggesting that only union contractors follow the law is not true and disrespects the many companies that have built this city for years. Third, this ordinance is not inclusive. It is exclusive. Over 85% of Washington's workforce is non-union, and 98% of the women and minority-owned firms are non-union. These contractors and their employees would be shut out or forced to abandon their workforce and change their labor policies. At the end of the day, we all support the idea of local hire and building our local economy. As she said, we do a lot of work to get these people jobs, and we strongly support them in finding those jobs. And this isn't about uni, union or non-union. It's about whether the city should pass a policy that increase costs, reduces competition, invites lawsuits, and excludes the very people who bu, build this city. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Dennis? After Dennis, Will Huelings.
Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. This is regarding 744 and 745. Again, there was too many things on one agenda for two minutes. What I took away from yesterday's reading from Jeremiah and those who didn't like what he was saying to throw him into an empty cistern to sink and die in the mud, and the psalmist finding steady footing and trust in the Lord as his help and deliverer, and in the letter to the Hebrews encouraging the readers to not grow weary for our struggles pale in comparison to Christ, and finally, in the gospel challenging us that with peace comes division. What I did take away from all that is that we are called to do the right thing, even when it's hard. Jeremiah was cast in the mud by the mob, and the authority of the king allowed it to happen, even though he was the one in power. But a brave man at great personal risk pleaded with the king and won Jeremiah's release. And Jesus' own words about division were perfectly fulfilled in his passion. Doing the right thing sometimes comes with great personal cost. I'm asking you to do the right thing regarding these ordinances. The authors claim to desire clarity, but they don't even define some of the several main subjects, specifically driveways, shared driveways, how many units may share a driveway, requiring a driveway to have two egress points when it exceeds a specified number of units served. I could go on. And the gobsmacker here is the planning department, DSC, city engineer at all, all want you to just give away your rightful position as deciderer on variances and bequeath it all upon the unelected leader, the city engineer, administrator. Well, the Lacy Project described earlier tonight and the ASH Project that probably vetted, or started this, is an example of exactly why you should send this back to the drawing board and demand it come back with clear definitions, specific guidelines for variances, and maintain counsel as the authority to approve or deny variances. This is the only way I can see for this, is to start over. I ask you to seriously consider the safety impacts, which opens the city up to civil liability. Be the one who stands up for what's right instead of deferring to the rule of the mob.
Thank you. Will? And after Will, Jeff Stevens and John Alder.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. Um, I'm here today to strongly oppose ordinance C 36740. Uh, this ordinance, we're told, is about expanding so-called protections against warrantless searches from immigration enforcement, extending what is considered non-public space to even public events held on public right-of-ways. In other words, if this passes, Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or even federal agencies like the FBI, DEA, ATF, or Homeland Security, could be barred from entering places like Riverfront Park during events such as unity in the community, which was this weekend. Uh, let me be clear, this does not make Brown Town, Spokane safer or more welcoming. I, you guys got my speech as, but as someone that lives downtown, why don't you care about Will and other, the, the citizens of Spokane that come here and complain about how dangerous and crazy it has become? I mean, I'm, I'm going to go even harder in, in open forum, but this is ridiculous. What I've seen, I mean, I thought SPD was getting their act together and going out and doing foot patrols, but obviously, I, I don't know. I mean, I sat out for about an hour at 1:00 in the morning and didn't see one cop going down Sprague in front of my building on a Friday. But anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, and then John?
Good evening, council president, members of council. I'm here, uh, to speak about 36744 and 36745, also the renaming of the streets. Um, I serve as the chair of Audubon Downriver Neighborhood Council, and we went through this process with the Ash Place Development. It was denied by the Hearing Examiner because it didn't meet the street requirements. And now it appears that the Planning Department has said, well, let's change the rules then, you know, so that we can do this. And that, I have great concerns with that because we obviously raised the right issues. The Hearing Examiner listened to us about the safety of using a private alley as a street with little access, with no sidewalks. And so it concerns me a great deal that a developer can propose this if it's denied by the Hearing Examiner. They simply go back to the Planning Department. The Planning Department changes the rules. My concern is, is that what happens when it, the next time a developer has a problem? So I'm really concerned about the fact that this happens as a neighborhood leader. And I'm asking you to consider seriously some of those concerns that that Hearing Examiner had, not ignore them. And the, you know, there was all this touting about the Complete Streets Program that was just passed and how that improves pedestrian safety and sidewalks. And what we seem to be doing is going and flying in the face of that and changing it to where sidewalks aren't required. And there's a lot of different things that don't promote pedestrian safety in these new developments. Thank you.
Thank you. John? And then Keely?
John Alder, I live in Northeast. I have several things to talk about. First is a former union member of the SGIU Local 6. 36723 sounds like a good thing. Now, we're, we're talking about parks and schools for better neighborhoods. Well, I grew up in the Westview neighborhood where all the dads also had good jobs, which includes something, something called health insurance. And a good example of my dad's insurance paid for an opening on my aorta when it got too narrow. Later on, SGIU 6, my union health insurance covered a valve replacement surgery. So again, I repeat, you do need good neighborhoods, but let's have good jobs with the good parks and schools. Now, secondly, I want to bring up 36740, Safe and Welcome. Last Friday, I had, I got to be at Stevens Elementary at the shoe giveaway by Mission Schools Outreach Center, which illustrated how Safe and Welcome should work. We had residents, immigrant, non-immigrant, come in droves, receiving arms wide open welcome, receiving the same results, getting shoes for their family. The whole city needs to show the same Safe and Welcome 24/7, 365. So we need good jobs, good parks in cities. We also need to have a Safe and Welcome that makes the city safe to be in. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Keely? After Keely, Kristen.
Hello. I'm Keely Friesen, owner of and CEO of Vertical Options Elevator Services. We are a local, woman-owned contractor, specialty contractor in this area, and we are speaking on behalf of, uh, the Public Dollars for Public Benefits Act, ordinance 36723. We are opposed, and we ask for your help. We also invite you out to talk to our, um, employees. Um, this is not a good policy for our workers. As you've heard already, 84% of contractor, uh, contract, the construction workforce in the state of Washington has already made their choice to work for a non-union contractor. And so having to impose these requirements to sign up and work for, um, a union for a specific project, uh, forces them to pay, lose money out of their paycheck just to go towards benefits that they may never see or use, and it significantly drives up costs. So we are asking you to please oppose this. Um, my, my workers are not interested in working on projects like this that do this to them. And so I ask you to come out and meet them, talk to them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kristen, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Kristen Thomason. I'm a union representative of Teamsters Local 690, and I'm here to voice my support for the Public Dollars for Public Benefits ordinance. There are a plethora of reasons why I think this ordinance would greatly benefit the city and the immediately surrounding community. As a representative of hundreds of members within the construction trade, but also nearly 4,000 members across numerous industries in our community, I can appreciate the value of keeping our skilled labor, working on projects within our, within our city, instead of traveling long distances and spending their hard-earned paychecks elsewhere. The ripples that will be felt with these funds staying local will benefit not only the families of those workers working locally, but every industry within Spokane. With full family medical, our EMS services and healthcare systems will receive more funds than would be paid through Medicaid or Medicare reimbursement, which our providers desperately need. Our members will keep working locally to keep grocery store shelves stocked and package jewelry systems maintained. Keeping these taxpayer dollars local is essential to continuing to grow the Spokane area. As a mother of two young men, I believe it's important that we are providing lifelong skills and knowledge to the youth of our community. By providing an alternative to the traditional college pathway, we are building the next generation of skilled workforce, which would have access to benefits that set them up to be successful in life and not mired down by crippling student loans. I sincerely appreciate your time and implore everyone to remember what's at stake here, keeping public dollars in our community while helping to develop and maintain the future of our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Matt Chapman. I'm here representing both the Spokane Alliance and Ironworkers Local 14 in strong support of the Public Dollars for Bu, Public Benefit Ordinance. There's been a lot of discussion around this ordinance, and I want to address two concerns directly. First, cost. Some say this will increase project costs, but that's misleading. These are public works projects already governed by prevailing wage laws. That means union-level wages are already required. Non-union contractors can't underbid using substandard wages, so this ordinance doesn't raise costs. It simply ensures workers get the benefits they deserve using our public dollars. Second, competition. This ordinance doesn't exclude any contractor. It sets standards for healthcare, training, and fair treatment of workers. Contractors who've opted out of bidding, tired of competing against those who cut corners, may now return to bid on future projects here in Spokane. We can reward contractors. Next, let's move towards best value contracting for all city of Spokane projects, a system that rewards doing the right thing, not just the cheapest thing. And let it be clear, we would never support anything that jeopardizes our contractors. We're here for the workers first, but we know a strong contracting community matters. What's good for workers is good for contractors, but what's good for contractors isn't always good for the workers. This ordinance lifts standards for everyone. If a contractor won't invest in their workforce, we must ask, are they the ones we want to build Spokane's public projects? Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Keith, and then Nicole Reese?
Council members, good evening. My name is Mike Keith, and I represent Ironworkers Local 14 and the ironworkers who live and work right here in Spokane. Um, I strongly support the Public Dollars for Public Benefit ordinance. I've been in this trade for 18 years, and I'm here to address some of the information surrounding the Public Dollars for Public Benefit ordinance. When I became an organizer three years ago, I worked with a crew of nine ironworkers who were temporarily unionized through a project labor agreement. Six of those nine returned to non-union status. Some had family ties and were compensated accordingly. Some didn't need the full benefits, for their families were already grown. But three chose to stay union members because they had a young family or were starting, or planning to start one. They saw the value in consistent wages, full family health coverage, paid time off, and retirement benefits, regardless of, regardless of which employer they worked for. That kind of stability isn't just good for workers, it's good for the community. One of the claims is CWAs will displace non-union workers. In my experience in the example I mentioned, that's simply not true. The original workforce for that company remained on that project, and union labor supplemented it where needed. At the end of, at the end of that project, every worker had the freedom to choose representation, and nobody was forced to stay. Claim number two, this community workforce agreement will reduce take-home pay. On paper, maybe, but when you factor in the cost of health insurance, anywhere from $375 to $1,500 a month in retirement planning, the unprotected worker ends up paying more. Union benefits offer long-term financial security and peace of mind. This ordinance is about protecting taxpayer dollars and reinvesting them into Spokane's workforce. It's about ensuring public projects deliver public benefits, not just in infrastructure, but in the lives of the people who build it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Nicole?
My name is Nicole Reese. I live and work in District 2. I am the field organizer for Nuestras Traíces Centro Comunitario, but I am here speaking only as a member of the community tonight. I would like to express my support of ordinance C 36740, Safe and Welcome in Spokane. And while you consider this ordinance over the next week, I hope that you are able to extend a bit of empathy. I want you all to think about your communities, your neighborhoods, your friends and families. While you're reflecting on the life you painstakingly built for yourselves, I also hope you can bring yourself to imagine living with the fear of having that life ripped away from you. Of being detained by masked individuals who refuse to identify themselves. Of being taken to a facility where you are left not knowing what's going to happen next, where a simple phone call to your loved ones...
where a simple phone call to your loved ones can cost over $100. For many people in our community, this isn't a hypothetical situation. This is their reality. They live with and carry this fear constantly. It's a shadow that lingers over everything they do. I don't have the time to get into the nuances of how our immigration system is broken, or how fundamentally dehumanizing the enforcement of that broken system is. The bottom line is that people are scared, and they're hurting right now, many in silence and in isolation. And while Ordinance 36740 may not solve everything overnight, it's a step in the right direction, because it further allows people to protect themselves. And it's not against the law to demand a valid judicial warrant, even in public spaces or non-public spaces. It is a right guaranteed and protected by the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution to everyone.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Yeah, I don't know how. I apologize. Stephanie Simkins. My company is North Star Enterprises. I'm not quite sure how I signed up that way. However, council members, I am here today to speak in opposition to the proposed Public Dollars for Public Work Ordinance. I am a union contractor. We've been here in Spokane for over 40 years. We employ over 100 laborers throughout the work season. I am also a certified disadvantaged business enterprise, and we have, if this public ordinance passes, we will not be signing the agreement, and we will no longer be bidding public work projects with the city of Spokane. And here's why. First, I'm already signatory to the union, and I'm very happy and negotiate diligently on our labor agreement, and I am not going to sign on to a second conflicting agreement with new rules and expectations. Labor shortages are already one of our greatest challenges. We work diligently with the union hall to provide apprentices and journeymen, and oftentimes those halls are empty. It is forcing us to either find labor outside of the city or run short on projects until the person or apprentice becomes available. These new hiring restrictions will make an already very difficult situation nearly impossible to manage. Third, the administrative burden will be overwhelming. As a DBE contractor, we are already juggling mandates from the federal government, the state, the unions, LNI. This is going to add on an additional level of requirements and penalties, penalties for non-compliance. This places an unfair strain on small businesses like mine. Finally, I encourage the city to look inward. You have over 1,000 maintenance employees that work for you. Why don't you first adopt a workforce agreement internally and see how that works, and then mandate it to the contractors?
And thank you. Your time is up.
I am tired of... Oh, okay. Thank you.
Robert Ray? And then Rosario Armida? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Ray. I'm a Spokane native, and I live in the West Central community. And I'm for the Public Dollars for Public Benefit Ordinance. I take care of my three little brothers, my two-year-old daughter, and my narcoleptic father, which, I'm not going to lie, it's been very hard. I'm the pillar that everyone relies on. I cook, I clean, I transport, you name it, for the entire household. But when I was given the opportunity for the pre-apprenticeship program for the Ironworkers Union, which I'm super grateful for, things finally started to turn around. Financially, a weight has been lifted. I'm not always worrying where the kids' next meal will come from, or if we're going to make rent. And the work has been fantastic, but my only caveat is when I work far from home. My narcoleptic father, he can't cook, he can't take care of the household like I can, and I have to meal prep for the weeks on end, and then I'm gone. My brothers call my phone every night, trying to figure out how to work the oven or the air fryer so they don't burn the house down, which is funny, but I love them. With the Public Dollars for Public Benefit, everything changes. I can be home, I can be the pillar that they need me to be, I can be the role model they need me to be. I can just be there. I can work in town, I can see them, I can watch them grow up. It's a blessing I don't want to miss. I support this wholeheartedly, and I hope you guys can find it in your hearts that you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Okay, Sarah? And then Will Neville. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Codham, and I am the president, CEO of Associated Builders and Contractors, and I am here to talk about being opposed for the Public Dollars for Public Benefit. I represent hundreds of open-shop construction companies here in our area, and while this ordinance may look good on paper, in reality, it shuts out the majority of our local workforce. And I don't think that's ultimately what you guys are trying to do. It also reduces competition and it drives up cost. That's what I see when I read. So according to the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, 84% of construction workers in Washington choose not to join a union, and nationally, that number's closer to 90%. And this ordinance would force those workers and the contractors who employ them to operate under union rules, and to pay into union benefits that they will never have access to, just for the privilege of working on projects in their city. So to me, that just doesn't make sense. Project labor agreements can increase costs by 12 to 20%, so on a $5 million project, that could be up to $1 million that gets put back into Spokane. It's also important to recognize that unions don't have a monopoly on taking care of their workers. I represent hundreds of them. And so I personally know that they pay great wages, have great benefits, and provide safe places for their employees to work. I see that firsthand. The issue is a little personal for me as well when I read through it, because I'm in recovery from drugs and alcohol myself, and I've lived in that underrepresented population most of my life. And I know how important second chances are and real opportunities. But there's also a difference between a handout and a handup. Now, that's a story for another day. I'm happy to touch base with any one of you to share my testimony, but the principle still applies. This ordinance appears to give unions a handout, and only for what, the 16%? What about the other 84%? We already have a workforce shortage, and this mandate would hurt that even more. If it passes, it will, perhaps unintentionally, send a message to thousands of Spokane workers that they can't work on projects in their own city. It will tell them that only union workers are capable of doing the job, and I don't think that's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, city council. My name is Will Neville. I live in District 1. I'm a member of the Communist Party of Eastern Washington. The motto of Spokane is "We All Belong." That is why I'm in strong support for Safe and Welcome Spokane and Public Dollars for Public Benefit Ordinance is coming up for a vote. With the most recent reelection of Trump, we have seen attacks on immigrants, ICE agents using violence and harassing and detaining community members, and it's all been having a very negative effect on our community. We've also seen massive wealth transfers to billionaires and federal workers currently losing their collective bargaining rights. The overall community health right now is not in a good place, but there is optimism and hope. People are standing up to change things for the better. We also don't need people like Larry Stone dictating certain outcomes of public policy, which is what he's trying to do at every possibility. People like him have too much time, too much money, coupled with not-so-good ideas. There are business leaders here today, like who spoke before me, that have legislative priorities that are rooted in pro-Trump, anti-union, free-market ideologies, is trying to influence public outcomes. Right-to-work laws are also rooted in Jim Crow-era policies, which some business leaders actually here support. We should not cater, when we run for office, we should not cater to the interests of the big business interests. We're here to represent the people, people who actually work for a living, you know? Neoliberalism peddled by Ronald Reagan in the 80s paved the way for free market to take a stronghold, and it's had effects on declining union membership and exploitation of workers in the global south. And what we're seeing with Trump doing in DC, what will he do next? You know, VA, EPA, and FEMA workers have had, you know, canceled union contracts. Donald Trump is a union buster, and what the city needs to do is set the table for the fight ahead, which means increasing minimum wage, getting ICE out, and passing strong pro-worker legislation. Let's set a table to create a healthy community. Let's invest in workers, and let's invest in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is the end of comments. We only have one more person. Mary Aguilar? I'm sorry, was it Mercy or Mary?
Mercy.
Mercy, my apologies, I couldn't read it.
I also am in favor of this ordinance. Thank you. I also'd like to encourage that we do not allow ICE agents to be masked, and they must have proper ID, so everybody knows who they are. If they are in our community, they shouldn't be. Over 80% of the people they're picking up have not even committed a crime, maybe a traffic infraction of speeding or maybe not parking in the wrong spot. This is a stain on Spokane if you guys do not adopt this. And we're losing revenue, we're losing just people feeling free to come and go from their homes. And it's kind of sad to me that the city council is primarily Caucasian, because I've seen you out in the community, and I know how most of you interact with the Republican Party, and you support those who are actively going along with the racism of your party. And I would like for everybody to take a moment and realize that we are all here legally, and we need your support to protect our city that is in dire need. Also, the people behind me, thank you for coming and speaking up for unions.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment for first readings. At this time, we will go into open forum. Remember to be respectful. All comments are directed at the chair. You have two minutes, and we will start with Annie Walker.
Hi, my name's Annie Walker.
Annie, I'm going to have you wait a second as I leave the room, just so you're not disrupted. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Annie Walker. I'm from West Hills, District 2. The city of Spokane promised a scattered site model to ease pressure on downtown and distribute services more evenly throughout the city. Mayor Lisa Brown spoke about equality, equity, transparency, and constructive dialogue. Yet once again, West Hills is being asked to carry a burden far heavier than our share. Without proper process, community input, or any meaningful representation from our district councilman, Paul Dillon, the City and Waters Meat Foundation wants to place a tiny homeless village in our West Hills neighborhood, right next to a sober-living community with children and directly across the street from homes with young families. It's like putting a liquor store next to an outpatient rehab clinic, thoughtless, harmful, and completely counterproductive. This isn't just unfair, it's dangerous, and shows reckless disregard for our community's safety and stability. West Hills already hosts multiple shelters, transitional housing programs, rundown voucher motels, and soon, more large-scale Catholic charity projects. We've endured homeless encampments, open-air drug use, and just last week, three fires, suspected arson, which posed a very real potential danger to families, homes, and first responders. West Hills has no walkable grocery stores or essential services. We have limited transit and a critical bridge desperately needing repair. The bridge is a lifeline connecting families to jobs, schools, and healthcare, and it's cracked, unsafe, and a stark reminder of how our neighborhoods neglect, neglected, excuse me. How can the city expect us to support more vulnerable residents when our basic infrastructure is crumbling?
And thank you, Annie. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Earl Moore? And then Eugene Knowles?
Good evening, city council. Thank you for showing up here on Monday nights. I want to share some concerns regarding city governance and public welfare. I am deeply discouraged by the persistent issues facing our city with homelessness being the foremost concern. The lack of effective solutions continue to impact our community. Failure to address public order. You have caused much destruction in the homeless crisis by maintaining inaction. This has led to disorder by allowing individuals to roam the streets freely, both day and night. This is lawlessness. There also appears to be insufficient support for our police department, which has further contributed to the chaos rather than promoting order. I have witnessed dishonest and underhanded tactics within this council. While I am unable to call out individuals specifically, those responsible are certainly aware of their actions. Practices such as secretive background deals, late-night agreements are completely unacceptable and reveal a troubling lack of integrity. Again, may I remind you that you are to represent the will of your districts, not the mayor. I continue to pray over our city. I continue to pray for this city council, and I continue to stand on the strong rock of my salvation, Almighty God. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. Eugene? And then Ginger?
Evening, council. Eugene Knowles, I've been here in Spokane since 2010. I just wanted to get a couple of broad pictures here. We're, I guess you could say, almost at halftime for this administration. So here's what I want to do, is give this picture. The previous administration seemed like they thought they had an unlimited amount of money to clean up the homeless situation. The current administration seems like they believe they have an unlimited amount of time. Okay, put that aside. Now, this is kind of a pyramid, where at the top you have zero, in the middle you have five, and at the bottom you have nine. I'm going to run out of time, so I'll do as much as I can. On the zero, you have people like Elon Musk, Jeff Bezos. This is the top of the pyramid. These guys have billions. Then you come down to the guys that are toy billionaires with maybe a billion or two, and then you come down to the guys with 100 million. Then you come down to the average guy who might have, at the top, who might have $500,000 in saving in a home. And then, level four, you have the people who are going paycheck to paycheck. Now, I've often talked about number five, is when you save people. That pyramid comes down to the base. 95% of the population doesn't have the homeless problem. It's another pyramid underneath of that base, where at the very bottom is number nine. This is not a crisis, this is a calamity. Fentanyl, all the problems at the bottom. When you get down to number eight, this lady's just talking about people roaming through the street. These are street refugees. Number seven are campers. Camping is bad. It's not good. They don't know it. And I'll go even blunt, the city council isn't aware that camping is not good. It's an option that's taken when you failed to get number six done, and you failed to get number five done.
And thank you, Eugene. Our next is Ginger, and then Will?
Ginger, if you're online, you can hit star three to raise your hand. I don't see Ginger.
All righty, Will Hewings, and then John Alder.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown Spokane. Every single day, right outside my front door on Sprague, I see things no resident of Spokane should have to see, which are homeless encampments, people lying on the sidewalk, openly smoking fentanyl and meth as you walk by them, individuals wandering the streets with swords, bats, and weapons, and it just isn't once in a while, it is constant. And it just isn't once in a while, it is constant, around the clock. This is the reality of downtown Spokane, at least living downtown. And people see, trust me, they drive by, and they're shocked. They're like, Will, what's going on downtown? It's pretty sick. And I'm getting really fed up. But now, I will admit, on these rare occasions when the Spokane Police Department actually enforces the law and does their jobs, things improve. I've seen that difference. But sadly, that enforcement is the exception, not the rule. I was told by a sergeant a few weeks ago that there would be more officers walking the streets, doing foot patrols. That gave me some hope, but guess what? That already stopped. There are no foot patrols, no visible presence. I sat outside for an hour at one o'clock in the morning, shocked at what I seen on Friday night. No cops anywhere. Downtown is not safe, and the mayor and Kevin Hall should be ashamed, and you too.
Thank you, Will. John Alder, then Sunshine?
John Alder, I'm also a member of Westminster Church, which has a committee called SUN, which calls serving your neighbors. And one of the things we do is we try to get empty water bottles sent to the Sunwell Ministry so that people who are homeless can at least get water out of drinking fountains. But coming to the city council meeting, I was disturbed by finding drinking fountains turned off in Riverfront Park. What I'm hoping to find out is that somebody will find a way, make sure all drinking fountains are turned on, so people can take advantage of these water bottles we're giving homeless, at least give them a chance to have water. It's bad enough they're struggling to find a place to live and food to eat. They should at least be able to get water and food until they can find a place to live.
Thank you, John. Sunshine?
This is a picture of my kid and his mom before drug use and before she passed away. I just wanted to show you guys, this is real precious to me. Sunshine from Spokane. These are some of his achievement things I found in his storage unit. Also, on one of his sober times, he's currently not around right now. He's using. This podium is where I'm celebrated, not for what I'm missing or how I'm broken. I'm celebrated for who I've become, what I am, and most of all, at this podium to let everyone know that's watching how much I cherish every one of you. Fentanyl changed the game in how we support drug addicts. We are taught, don't enable them or, and hold them accountable. I just paid my kid's $400 storage unit. I don't know if he will come back alive. I'm selfish, and I'm scared his things might be all I have in the end. All our choices support our emotions, we feel. Fentanyl doesn't care that he is my world I fight for. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any knows, abstentions. We are adjourned. We will see you next Monday night.